Okay, it's 7:15. This is the time when we have public session. There's one person signed up, Bill Meyer. Please come to the podium. And per Common Council rules, no profanity, no name-calling, no personal attacks, and please try to keep it to five minutes.
Now, we got a sheet and a half. Name is Bill Meyer, 38 Singleton Street. Good evening, Mayor and councilors. Hopefully, this is all a rumor, but I've been hearing different stories about what is going to happen to West First Street between Utica and Murray Streets. I've heard that's being considered to bring West First down from four-lane to two-lane. I hope this does not happen. Remember that accessibility is needed for a church, approximately seventeen businesses, an apartment building, a restaurant, and a gas station. I can't imagine congestion that this would cause if it's reduced to two lanes. Let's assume someone is driving on West First Street and crosses Utica and decides they need fuel. Now, they're gonna turn left, but traffic, incoming traffic headed north. Now, you have a backup across Utica Street. How about someone headed north on West First, they want to turn onto Erie Street at the light? Traffic headed south on West First, today cars going to the right lane, get around everybody. But if it's reduced to one lane, they're not able to go around. If there's ten cars now, you have five in each lane. But with just one lane, a longer wait to turn result in backup. I also heard that the plan is to have parking on each side of the street. Why? All the businesses, the church, the post office, all have parking. Then I heard that there was going to be a median down the center of the road. I hope not. If you were out of business on the east side of the road and you wanted to go south, you would not be able to go, be able to turn left unless you went to an intersection to turn. A concern of mine is with all the possible congestion that this could cause, that some of these businesses could lose customers. We also have mentor ambulance service on Ohio Street. They use West First Street as a major route to get to patients on both west and east sides of this river. Add the possibility of a new firehouse and a police station, what a mess. Also, the nuclear power plants have West First Street as an egress out of the city in case of an emergency. Now, maybe this is part of a beautification plan or grant, but I think it's about time that we stop letting beautification outweigh what is practical and best for the city. We made East First Street beautiful, but do you really think when we have people from out of town visiting and they are parked in diagonal spaces in front of the hotel, that these people really care whether there's a tree in the middle of the road? Or maybe they're concerned about whether they can get their car backed up without hitting the median? How about what we did on West Seneca Street? Although, we probably did help the business on West First Street in Kyuga for tires with people hitting the curbs. It also must be difficult for our city plows to navigate the crosswalks that stick out in the road. I hope the Mayor and the council will take a good, hard look at the result of making West First Street a two-lane street. Beautiful is great, but I think the people who use West First Street will appreciate practicality over beauty. Let's repave West First Street as it is and spend what we have to and not spend money on what we do not need. Our taxes are high enough. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. That was the last person that's signed up. Is there anybody here in the audience that would like to come up and speak?
Hello, I'm Mary Van Ous. I'm Chair of the Tree Advisory Board for the City of Oswego, and I just wanted to thank the council for putting forward this resolution to authorize the Mayor to execute a letter of intent to participate in the New York State DEC Core Grant for some reforestation sites in the city. It's a small amount, but it will help with the college as well. They're also partnering with us to put over 300 acres on campus for reforestation. We're probably a little less than 30 acres here in the city. But thank you very much for your support.
All right, thank you. I know Commissioner Rebiore had a lot to do. He was working with you on that project.
Yes.
So, a big thanks to Commissioner Rebiore for stepping in and helping designate some of those spots. All right, I believe, well, is there anybody else that last minute would like to speak? Oh, one more.
Good evening, everyone. Brandon Walker, Fifth Ward. I'm gonna reiterate the same thing Mr. Meyer said. Is, West First Street, I remember coming here back in December briefly talking about the idea of having those lanes. Having those four lanes available for commercial drivers is going to be needed, not necessarily for me, but other out-of-state drivers that might not be familiar with the area. My concern is if you do what we intend to do, you may have people hit cars, hit curbs, stuff curbs, and reduce flow of traffic. I would just like to say reconsider and look at the idea of the flow of traffic currently. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. One more time, is there anybody else that would like to speak from the audience? Seeing none, we will close public session and the meeting will begin at 7:30.
Okay, it's time.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Please call the roll.
His honor the mayor.
Here.
Counselor Walton.
Here.
Counselor Burridge.
Here.
Counselor Bonucci.
Here.
Counselor Walker.
Here.
Counselor Gosick.
Here.
Counselor Plunkett.
Here.
Counselor Allen.
Excused.
Six present, one excused.
Thank you. Under the mayor's report, I have a few things I'd like to share. It was kind of a busy six, seven days. First of all, for those of you that attended yesterday's St. Patrick's Day parade, I'd like to thank the Hibernians for their efforts to put the parade on. I'm not sure if this is the third or fourth year they've done it in a row, but it's a lot of work. And from the people that I saw yesterday, it looked like everybody enjoyed it. Unfortunately, it was a little cold, maybe a little windy. So Madi kept the numbers down a little bit, but the people who were there enjoyed it. And as far as I'm concerned, yesterday was the unofficial start of spring. So I'm going with that one. Number two on my list. Last week, there was a water main break that affected most of the seventh ward, including my house. I would like to thank the DPW for all their work in getting the issue resolved quickly. When these breaks occur during the winter, it is very challenging to get them fixed. And we really appreciate their efforts on this and on every water main break because during the winter, it's very difficult. Now, this brings me to my next topic. As soon as we knew about the break and when it would be repaired, we spread the news on the city website and the city Facebook page and local media. Matter of fact, I did see it on Channel Nine during lunchtime on that Thursday where they reported the water main break. Now, usually these breaks can be repaired without incident in about five, six, seven hours without having to issue a boil water advisory. But due to the extenuating circumstances and the location of that break, we had to issue a boil water advisory, which again affected my house. And I can tell you, it's not fun when you have to boil pots and pots of water. Just ask my wife. So, but again, this brings me to what I really want to talk about here is usually unfortunately, many people did not receive the information because they did not sign up for TextMyGov. This is a great opportunity for me to mention this great service. It's free to join. All you need to do is text nine, one, eight, nine, six to receive information from the city about water main breaks, road closures, or events happening in the city. Everyone in my family has signed up, and I encourage all city residents to do that because it's an easy way to receive important information that may help you. Thank you. That was the mayor's report. We're going to move right on to the state of the city report. Maybe not. Let's do it the old-fashioned way. Okay, it's an honor to be here today to deliver my second state of the city address. I am proud to report that the city of Oswego is strong, resilient, and moving forward with great momentum. Over the past year, we have witnessed remarkable progress in four cornerstones of our community: infrastructure, economic development, public safety, and tourism. These achievements would not have been possible without the dedication of our hard-working city employees, the collaboration of the common council, and the many community partners who invest their time and energy into making Oswego a better place. I am grateful to all of you who made those contributions to our community. Together, we are building a stronger, more vibrant Oswego, one that offers opportunity, safety, and a high quality of life for all of residences, businesses, and visitors. I'm going to briefly touch upon all four of these cornerstones. Item number one is the infrastructure. One of my top priorities since taking office has been revitalizing and modernizing our city's infrastructure. We've made strategic investments in roads, sidewalks, city buildings, and our critical water and wastewater systems to ensure they are safe, reliable, and sustainable. Key projects include $1.1 million renovation of the Customs House building, which is right behind me. It's home to the police department and to city courts. That work included a new roof that was completed last year and masonry repairs to the outside to preserve the structural integrity. The masonry work was not completed as of the start of winter this year, so they will restart that shortly to finish that project. A $10.6 million upgrade to the West Side Wastewater Treatment Plant with about $8 million in grant funding for that project. $5.4 million upgrade to the East Side Wastewater Treatment Plant supported by a $1 million grant. A $6.8 million improvement project at the McCaffrey Water Treatment Facility with about $3 million in grant support. A $9.7 million upgrade to the High Dam utilizing $1.3 million grants so far. And there are other grants we're applying for to help reduce those costs of the upgrades. And something that a few of you mentioned today, the West First Street Reconstruction Project. We just received the bids back a couple of weeks ago on that project, and that's going to be a $7 million effort to enhance safety, upgrade traffic and pedestrian signals, replace sewer and water infrastructure, and add more on-street parking. $3.8 million in New York State funding will help bring this project to life in the spring, and the rest we will bond for. The paving of approximately $1 million worth of city streets using reimbursable CHIPS funding in 2024 and again in 2025. The replacement of $90,000 in sidewalks to ensure ADA compliance and improve pedestrian accessibility. We purchased about 3,000 city streetlights from National Grid, and we're converting them to LED lighting, a project that will be starting in earnest this month, later this month. And I must say, after planning for about a year to get that project up and running, it's taken a while, but we're going to see the fruits of all that hard labor. We replaced the lacrosse box last year. Fort Ontario replaced an old broken-down box. I know Council Burridge and his ward was happy to see that. We received a $1 million grant to restore the Ponzi Building, looking to apply additional funding sources for that project. And I have talked to the state of New York, and hopefully we can work out some kind of deal. But right now, I can't really release any details, but we're hoping to have a good use for that building once we get it restored. We received a $179,000 grant to construct four new pickleball courts at Fort Ontario in 2025. And then last but not least, the lead service project. Late last year, we were awarded $5.5 million in zero, and of that $5.5 million, 0% financing was for about $4.7 million, and about $743 million was a straight-out grant for that. We estimate that that's going to replace about 350 to 500 service lines that are lead-based. Investing in the wastewater and freshwater facilities does not always capture headlines or excitement, but are the essential foundations of a progressive community. We have a responsibility to maintain and improve these systems for current and future residents to use. While all these projects have straightened our city, there's still work to be done. In 2025, we will continue seeking additional grant opportunities to further invest in our infrastructure. I want to recognize our Department of Public Works again, led by Commissioner Craig Gribyor, for their hard work in maintaining our buildings, our roads, parks, water systems, and public spaces. Their dedication is essential to keeping Oswego running smoothly, and I thank you. Item number two cornerstone is economic development. Oswego has become a hub for new businesses and job opportunities, particularly since the awarding of the Downtown Revitalization Initiative grant in 2017. The city's planning and zoning boards continue to work closely with property owners and business leaders to ensure responsible growth without compromising quality-of-life issues. New businesses, both national, regional, both national and local, are choosing Oswego as their home, demonstrating the strength of our local economy as they recognize that Oswego is a great place to do business. Some of the recent additions include Texas Roadhouse, Splash Car Wash, and Hobby Lobby, to name three national or regional brands that are operating now in Oswego. The opening up of Flintstone Cannabis Company on George Street. Adventures at Burrits, a new destination of capturing outdoor fun. $2.1 million Global Marina Project by the Port Authority at the end of West First Street, which will enhance our waterfront. Connect Care Expansion on East First Street, increasing access to healthcare. Cliff's Local Market, providing additional retail options out on 104 East. Curtis Manor's Kingsher Building, offering another option for events in our community. We supported, this council voted for it, supported a grant opportunity of $1 million for a developer to renovate the historic railroad freight house on West Utica Street between West Second and West Third. That'll be a wonderful project to improve that particular historic building, one of the last ones that represent the history of our railroad. And then ongoing reservations, ongoing renovations at the Market House, which feature new apartments and a soon-to-be-open restaurant and microbrewery. I can tell you, I just recently went there, and the food was outstanding, the service was exceptional, and the building is something to be marveled at. So I hope everybody gets an opportunity to take a look at that once it opens up to the public. These developments are clear indicators that Oswego is a city of opportunity. We will continue working to attract new businesses, create jobs, and support local entrepreneurs. The city's Office of Economic Development, headed by Amy Murphy, stands ready to help businesses through our revolving loan program, which can provide investors with GAAP funding. I am proud to say that our sales tax revenue, the city's primary source of income, has increased in each of the five years, easing the burden on our property owners. I really need to say that twice because this is, this is a huge development, I believe, that we should all make note of. I am proud to say that our sales tax revenue, the city's primary income source, has increased in each of the past five years, easing the burden on our property owners. I think that's huge. Cornerstone number three, public safety. Ensuring the safety of Oswego's residents remains a top priority. We have continued to invest in our police and fire departments by hiring new personnel to replace retiring individuals, upgrading equipment, and providing additional training. Police Chief Katie and Fire Chief Conson have done a superb job of leading their respective departments. The men and women who keep us all safe deserve our support and recognition for a job well done. Some notable public safety initiatives: OFD, our fire department, taking full advantage of available federal, state, and private grant funding, receiving about $68,000 in grant funding in 2024; investing on our people through regimented shift training, development, and succession planning; investing in special operations training, like water training, hazardous materials, tech rescue, and rescue dive operations; taking delivery of two new fire engines later this year; thermal imaging cameras, gas meters, and safety equipment; and then finalizing a long-term strategy plan for the fire department that will embrace training, development, technology, and fiscal efficiency. Now for the police department. Planning for a new police/community center on West First Street at the former Shapiro Car Dealership site, supported by a $1 million grant so far, and we're looking for more. Conducted a downtown parking and neighborhood traffic study with several changes made to accommodate parking downtown and new innovative measures to slow traffic in several neighborhoods slated for later this year. Securing $800,000 in grants for new police equipment. Supporting the city drug task force in its continued efforts to combat illegal drug activity in our community. Expanding the use of solar-powered speed control devices to reduce speeding. Strengthening the neighborhood engagement team by adding a full-time investigator to address nuisance properties in the city. The city's advanced drone program has proven invaluable in assisting first responders, both police and fire, by improving public safety and enhancing emergency response efforts. Replacing our outdated police station will improve operations, increase safety, and provide a more efficient department. The community-centered component of the building will provide residents with a modern, easily accessible facility to hold small gatherings or meetings, and is designed to act as an emergency operations center during large-scale events and emergencies in our areas. Cornerstone number four, tourism. Oswego's vibrant downtown and improved waterfront have become major attractions for visitors and residents, and we are committed to promoting our city as a year-round destination. The Downtown Visitor Center, along with the partnership of Oswego County Tourism, will continue to promote our area with the help of volunteers, and I thank them for their service. Oswego has much to offer tourists, and we should do our best to get that information out. Some of the places and events that attract visitors are the Oswego Speedway, Fort Ontario, Safe Haven Museum, Summer Concert Series, Splash Indoor Water Park, Lighthouse Tours, Richardson Bates Museum, H. Lee White Maritime Museum, Harbor Fest, of course, Tiki Boat Sunset Tours, and what I think is the most attractive venue here in the city of Oswego is our beautiful sunsets on Lake Ontario. I think that's worth a lot. And I don't want to forget some of the fine dining establishments in our city that people come to enjoy. Some of the key tourism highlights include the designation of Lake Ontario's eastern end as the 16th National Marine Sanctuary, which will bring more visitors to Oswego. I will continue advocating for our city to become the sanctuary's visitor center. I, as well as some other stakeholders in the city of Oswego, are on the advisory board, and we will do what we can to advocate for our city to become the location for that visitor center. The Safe Haven Museum's path toward becoming a national, becoming part of the national park system, which will introduce Oswego's historic role in hosting nearly 1,000 refugees during World War II to a national audience. I know there's been a pause with recent developments in the federal government, but we're going to do all we can to keep pushing for that. Increased winter and summer events, including figure skating competitions, hockey, softball, baseball, fishing tournaments. They all bring in people who spend money, who stay in our hotels, eating in our restaurants, and that's certainly a good sign for our tourism. Growth in the number of conferences and businesses events held at the Lake Ontario Event and Conference Center, further boosting our economy. Organizers of these events recognize that Oswego offers so much for attendees to see and do. I personally have attended several of these conferences over at the convention center, and I was so happy to see that so many people have chosen Oswego to come for these conferences. Of course, I haven't seen any during January, February, March, probably for obvious reasons. Ongoing investments in our parks, waterfronts, and recreational spaces giving residents and visitors beautiful places to gather, relax, enjoy Oswego's natural beauty, and amenities. As I said, as a member of the Lake Ontario Marine Sanctuary Advisor Committee, I and other local stakeholders will advocate strongly for NOAA to place a future visitor center in our community. Along with the national park designation for Safe Haven, our community will receive national recognition that will produce an influx of visitors to our community now and in the future. The last item I want to talk about is not a cornerstone, but something that I've talked about quite often during the last 14 months, and it's titled "A Unified Team." Since day one as mayor, I have emphasized that every city employee is part of a team with one goal: to make Oswego great. A great place to live, to work, and visit. No matter their role, every city worker contributes to our progress, and I'm honored to work beside them every day. Another item that I think is important to comment. Transparency and communication remain central to my administration. In 2024, we relaunched the City of Oswego Facebook page, now with nearly 5,000 followers, to keep residents informed about news, road closures, and community events. Providing a place for accurate and timely information is important for any city and its residents. With that in mind, we now have a communications specialist to share agendas, proclamations, and project updates on various platforms, including Facebook, city website, and the media. We also offer, as I mentioned earlier this evening, TextMyGov, another convenient way for residents and visitors to communicate with the city. You can sign up to receive text message notifications from the city for upcoming events, road closures, water main breaks, anything that's important that's happening in the city. In closing, we have much to be proud of here in the city of Oswego, but there is still more to accomplish. With the continued dedication of our city employees, the support of the common council, and the active engagement of our residents, I am confident that Oswego's best days are ahead. Thank you for the honor of serving as your mayor. Together, we will keep the city moving forward. Thank you. And now to the business at hand. Please call resolution 58.
Approve minutes. Common council meeting held February 24, 2025.
Counselor Plunkett, Counselor Walton. Comments? Please call the roll.
Counselor Plunkett.
Yes.
Counselor Walton.
Yes.
Counselor Burridge.
Yes.
Counselor Bonucci.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Gosick.
Yes.
Resolution passes 601.
Call resolution 59.
Appoint Commissioner Deeds.
Counselor Gosick, Counselor Bonucci. Comments? Please call the roll.
Counselor Plunkett.
Yes.
Counselor Walton.
Yes.
Counselor Burridge.
Yes.
Counselor Bonucci.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Gosick.
Yes.
Resolution passes 601.
Call resolution 60.
Authorize public hearing regarding proposed 10-year agreement between Spectrum Northeast LLC and the City of Oswego.
Counselor Burridge, Counselor Plunkett. Comments? Please call the roll.
Counselor Plunkett.
Yes.
Counselor Walton.
Yes.
Counselor Burridge.
Yes.
Counselor Bonucci.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Gosick.
Yes.
Resolution passes 601.
Call resolution 61.
Authorize two-year extension of agreement with J&R Outdoors Incorporated
for fish cleaning services at Wright's Landing and West Linear Park.
Counselor Walton, Counselor Bonucci. Comments? Please call the roll.
Counselor Plunkett.
Yes.
Counselor Walton.
Yes.
Counselor Burridge.
Yes.
Counselor Bonucci.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Gosick.
Yes.
Resolution passes 601.
Call resolution 62.
Authorize mayor to sign professional services agreement with Essex Partnerships LLC for commercial performance optimization at the High Dam Hydroelectric Facility.
Counselor Walker, Counselor Burridge. Comments? Please call the roll.
Counselor Plunkett.
Yes.
Counselor Walton.
Yes.
Counselor Burridge.
Yes.
Counselor Bonucci.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Gosick.
Yes.
Resolution passes 601.
Call resolution 63.
Authorize mayor to execute letter of intent for participation in a New York State Department of Environmental Conservation Corps grant regarding Oswego City Tree Advisory Board.
Counselor Gosick, Counselor Plunkett. Comments? Please call the roll.
Counselor Plunkett.
Yes.
Counselor Walton.
Yes.
Counselor Burridge.
Yes.
Counselor Bonucci.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Gosick.
Yes.
Resolution passes 601.
Call resolution 64.
Approve new fee schedule for ambulance services.
Counselor Walker, Counselor Walton. Comments? Please call the roll.
Counselor Plunkett.
Yes.
Counselor Walton.
Yes.
Counselor Burridge.
Yes.
Counselor Bonucci.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Gosick.
Yes.
Resolution passes 601.
That's the last item on the agenda. Is there any unfinished business? Seeing none, I can have a motion to adjourn. Counselor Plunkett, Counselor Burridge. Please call the roll.
Counselor Plunkett.
Yes.
Counselor Walton.
Yes.
Counselor Burridge.
Yes.
Counselor Bonucci.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Gosick.
Yes.